Our regular city council meeting to order. Today's Thursday, August 28th, 2025. This is our regular 7:00 PM council meeting. We will start things off tonight with our opening prayer. Please welcome Jason Betts with Span Ministries here in Talmage. We'll remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, everyone. Let us pray. Father, heaven, Lord, right now, in the name of your son, Jesus, Lord, we just thank you. We thank you for another opportunity to be in your presence once more, Father God, Lord. But we thank you for this great city of Talmage. Lord, we thank you for your elected officials. We thank you for the people in the community. Lord, we ask that right now, Lord, that your presence would be in this place, Father God. We pray for every decision that's made, every decision that needs to be had today, Lord, will be ordained by you today, Father God, Lord. So we welcome your Holy Spirit in this place. We welcome your Holy Spirit and your guidance for every decision that needs to be made today and every conversation that needs to go forth today, Lord. So we thank you, Lord, and we praise you, Lord, in your son, Jesus, mighty holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Jonathan Bolus.
Here.
Christine Sippa.
Here.
Jessica Epstein.
Here.
Donald Pavlik.
Here.
Tracy Pletcher.
Here.
Ted Roy.
Here.
Nick Rabino.
Here.
All right, all seven counselors are present this evening. Next up is correcting and adopting our meeting minutes from the August 14th, 2025 regular city council meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the August 14th, 2025 meeting minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the August 14th, 2025 regular meeting minutes as presented. Any discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Christine Sippa.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Tracy Pletcher.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rabino.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes. The regular council meeting from August 14th, 2025, meeting minutes have been adopted by a vote of seven to zero. Next up is our financial reports. We are not in receipt of any financial reports this evening. Public hearings, we have none. So then that brings us to community input. For community input this evening, we ask that if anyone here who would like to speak on an item not on the agenda, you may do so now, and you will have two minutes to speak. Again, if it's related to anything that's not on the agenda. If it's on the agenda, we just wait for you, we request for you to humbly wait until it comes to committee. So at this time, is there anyone that would like to speak? Yes. Please state your name and address, and you'll have two minutes. Thank you.
My name is Lee Giddon. My address is 1602 Timber Top Drive, Talmage, Ohio, 44278. I'm here representing Alpha Eleven Veteran Logistics, and I have an ask of the city council, and I have a thank you also. Ask is, first of all, the Talmage High School is throwing a Military Appreciation Night on September the 19th, and we would like to have permission to have the signs digitally put up on the Circle and at the rec center to advertise the Military Appreciation Night for Talmage against Barberton after our home game, whoever I need to talk to, whatever we need to do to get that possibly done. The second thing I'd like to say is, my charity is very young here in Talmage, and we are looking for places to hold our roundtables, and I called Ward Two Councilman Pavlik about the Lions Park, and I asked him what it would take to be able to use that, and he said there was a charge, but he would take care of it for us. So in February, we are going to have a Veterans Roundtable at the Lions Park. Thank you to Ward Two Councilman Pavlik. I appreciate it.
Thanks very much. All right. Again, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to an item not on the agenda? Yes, please.
Anthony Guenta, 451 Blossom Circle in Talmage.
Could you restate your name for the record?
Oh, sorry. Anthony Guenta, 451 Blossom Circle, Talmage. I want to be clear from the start, this is an issue that we've been dealing with, you know, myself, or I moved here, you know, in the beginning of December of 2024, and this is an issue that we've been having as residents on the Circle with a home that operates as a group home. So I want to be clear from the start that this is not about who lives at this residence of 448 Blossom. We welcome every resident to our neighborhood, including those with disabilities. This is how the property is being operated by the operator, Hattie Larlam, in Summit Housing, and the impact that we're having on our small cul-de-sac. What we see every day, everyday multiple staff rotate in and out. This is not a quiet nursing residence, it's a shift work with cars coming and going. A corporate van is regularly parked in the driveway and sometimes on our cul-de-sac, honking, I'm sorry, honking for pickups. Staff meetings bring clusters of cars, sometimes five to eight vehicles on this cul-de-sac. Neighbors have documented speeding and tailgating by the staff. One incident nearly struck a child on a bicycle requiring police involvement. We've had trash, trash pickups missed, and there's been a concern that emergency vehicles could be blocked by the overflow of parking. The design of the cul-de-sac is for low traffic, safe play, and easy access, not for a commercial level of traffic in meetings. One of the reasons I moved to Talmage was for family planning, and specifically on a cul-de-sac to plan to have small kids and then be able to enjoy and ride bikes and all that in a safe environment. Now, we understand that group homes, under Ohio Revised Code 5119, one to five residents are treated, are treated and can be in single, single-family households with, but when you start considering daily staff shifts and vans and meetings that dominate, the home takes on an institutional character. Talmage Code 1189, conditional uses should be on a collector or arterial roads and proper access, not on cul-de-sacs. That's for conditional use. City Code 35103, we've documented illegal parking that blocks driveways, hydrants, and mailboxes. I believe 35103 also includes a 25-foot distance from mailboxes as well. Chapter 717, local law requires group homes to register and allow inspections. If this property has not been licensed, it's out of compliance. And we fully expect the operator to say, you can't deny housing with people with disabilities. Federal law protects that, and we understand that, and that's absolutely true. Again, we respect that. But ADA and FHA protect residents and the right to live in the community. They do not give corporations the right to run business-like operations without following zoning, traffic, and safety codes. Courts have recognized this distinction in Bryant Woods Inn versus Howard County in 1997. A group home expansion was denied because traffic and parking concerns. Neutral rules like parking, fire access, and safety are fair game for enforcement. City of Edmonds in Oxford Home, 1995, the Supreme Court made clear that while you cannot use zoning to exclude group homes, cities can enforce neutral regulations that apply to all homes. In Belterra versus Boris, the court affirmed that cities can preserve the quiet character of single-family neighborhoods. In short, we're not asking you to remove residents, we're asking you to enforce the same neutral safety and zoning rules that apply to every household. Our request, verify if 448 Blossom is licensed locally under Chapter 717. Recognize that staff rotations, corporate vans, and meetings are institutional activities inconsistent with single-family, single-family households, and require the operator to apply for a conditional use permit so the community can provide input and appropriate safeguards can be set. We respect fair housing, we respect ADA protections, but those laws do not excuse daily traffic hazards, block services, or an institutional operation in the middle of the cul-de-sac. All we're asking is the city apply the same safety, parking, and zoning rules that every neighbor must follow. Conditional use permits exist for exactly this reason, to balance special uses with neighborhood safety and character. We're looking to restore balance to our neighborhood.
Thank you very much. Thank you, I appreciate. Would the Law Department or administration like to respond to that?
I'll just say that we were presented with your complaints today, and so we will take a look at the ones that we can take action on, which some of them we will be able to, such as the parking and things like that, that is applicable, and other things we will further review, but, you know, we'll refer to the appropriate department if we can take action on. Thank you.
And I'll continue to follow up. Yes, would you like to, yes, go ahead.
So, good evening. My name is Colleen Kulizinski, and I live at 454 Blossom Circle directly next to the home that is in question at the moment. So I didn't know I'd have a chance to speak, but what I wanted to share with you is that we have a couple of neighbors that weren't able to make it tonight, so they're in full support of what we're doing as well, kids programs and things like that going on. But the homeowner that lives on the corner of Jennifer Trail and Blossom Circle, when I talked to her today, she said, oh my goodness, would you please be sure to tell council that the school bus picks up her kids and other kids right there at that corner, and she specifically goes there every morning. They're little kids, they're first, second, third grade, so they're not older elementary kids. And the cars come flying around the corner, going into the home that's in question that we're talking about. So she has approached them and asked them to slow down. The challenge you're going to have when you have employees going in and out, you're going to have change of employment, you're going to have people dropping off, a wife or husband dropping them off there, and they really have no skin in the game because they're just coming in and leaving. So it's a lot different than us, who are homeowners, that are going to be more respectful of the neighborhood. And I also just wanted to share that I am one of the original owners, when Talmage decided to parcel this land off residentially, I was part of that conversation where we decided to parcel it off and build homes back there. And I do remember at that time, when we were building, there was some type of bylaw restriction that everybody in that area had to follow. And this was pretty much before HOAs became popular. This was in the 1988, 1991, it was in a term I don't recall hearing. So before that, they had some type of a bylaw that the old Orchard Estates had. And the reason why I remember it is some of the homeowners were, they were on top of everything. I can remember things like a satellite dish, if you remember back then, they were rather large, and, you know, God forbid if anybody put one of those in front of their yard on Old Orchard, because somebody in that group would be knocking on their door and saying, you're in violation. So I did reach out to Heather, who is an admin, I think, for the city planning, maybe, zoning and planning, and she was very helpful. And I asked her, would it be possible for her to find those archive records possibly, of what were those bylaws and restrictions? And unfortunately, she wasn't able to find that information, and I certainly don't have it. So we went from a highly restricted area to group home. And so somewhere in that mix, we've lost something on how we are, any neighborhood in Talmage, especially cul-de-sacs. I think the biggest thing, if you don't live on one, just to notice, is there's hardly any curb space. Okay, if you're building or there's a large truck, we just had a tree removed from the front of our home, and when a big truck comes in, we shut the cul-de-sac down. I mean, you can't get a big truck in and remove a tree without it interrupting the few neighbors, I think there's five houses on our cul-de-sac. You're going to interrupt it. So that is a one-time thing, but when this is going down constantly with larger vehicles picking up patients, clients, whatever you want to call them, what Hattie Larlam would refer to them as, it becomes, it becomes more than a home, you know, with a family. So that is, I think, what I would love to share.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you coming in.
I have one question. Is there a development name to your development or street?
There is.
And it's called Blossom?
Old Orchard Estates.
Old Orchard Estates? There's nothing on the plat of the landfill with the county?
Yes, there is.
Does it contain bylaws?
Well, that, I can't answer that. It is, it's on the plat, it's Old Orchard Estates, and down below on Dunbar, it's called Creekside Estates, because those two were being developed at the same time back then. But we clearly had a, yes, we did. And we also had deed restriction, and that was another thing I talked to Heather about, because I know that the city cannot enforce a deed restriction, but we do have them. And one other point I would like to make, I asked the neighbors, if you knew that a group home was sitting in this cul-de-sac before you bought the home, would you have bought it? And their answer was, absolutely not. So I feel on our end, if we sell our homes, I feel like the next person coming in should know that there's a group home in this small little area in which we live. I think that would be a fair thing to tell the next homeowner if they came in. So.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. No, just continuing on with community input, is there anyone else that would like to speak on an item not on the agenda this evening? All right. Then we will move into item eight, which is our agenda additions. So we have several presentations this evening. So the first one up, very excited to announce the presentation of a proclamation to Emma Lindy for winning the Little League Home Run Derby.
Kids got good genes.
Just stand right here for me. Okay, it is always my honor when I can recognize a member of our community for representing the city of Talmage with honor, grace, and integrity, and in the achievement of something absolutely spectacular. So today, I am very, very proud to present a proclamation to Emma Lindy for earning the title of the 2025 T-Mobile Little League Home Run Derby Champion. And I'm going to just read a couple of these whereas, because it's really quite amazing. Whereas this proclamation recognizes and honors Emma Lindy for earning the title of 2025 T-Mobile Little League Home Run Derby Champion. And whereas Emma began her softball journey in Talmage Little League at the age of five, developing her skills, determination, and love of the game that continue to define her today. And whereas the T-Mobile Little League Home Run Derby is an annual competition where baseball and softball players showcase their power at the plate, advancing through local, regional, and national rounds. And whereas the Derby Finals are held each August at the Little League World Series in South Williamsport, Pennsylvania, bringing together regional champions from across the nation. And whereas on Thursday, August 25th, at Volunteer Stadium in South Williamsport, Emma Lindy hit 40 home runs across three rounds. That's amazing. Earning her the title of the 2025 T-Mobile Little League Home Run Derby Champion. And whereas Emma represents our community with pride, talent, and determination throughout the competition. And whereas Emma's victory highlights her dedication, sportsmanship, and the support of her family, coaches, and teammates, while also serving as an inspiration to young athletes everywhere. And therefore, I, Carol Siciliano Kilway, Mayor of the City of Talmage, do hereby proudly recognize and congratulate Emma Lindy for her extraordinary achievement as the 2025 T-Mobile Little League Home Run Derby Champion. On behalf of the residents of the City of Talmage, I extend my best wishes for her continued success both on and off the field, and commending her for bringing pride and distinction to our community throughout her exceptional accomplishments. Congratulations. Thank you. Right like that, and we'll do it right here, so. Oh, we'll get over this place so we don't have the podium in there?
Yes.
Okay. And then we'll get some pictures of you and your family, too. Can't move it too much.
Yeah, just wait. Sorry, I still got the corner of the podium.
Okay.
There we go.
Right. All right, why don't we get pictures of your family, too? Okay, come on up, guys. You don't need me in this one. I'm so ready.
My email from three hours ago. Just reply.
Make sure everybody's looking at it. All right, great, thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
All right, next up, we have another presentation for our Certificate of Appreciation. This Certificate of Appreciation is going to Charles Nathaniel and Stacy Billows, and
Thank you. Tonight, I want to honor the Billow family with the certificate appreciation from city council. All the Billow families, family members, Nate, Chip, Stacy, and Chris all live in Talmage. They've operated a successful funeral home for 150 years, where Nate and Stacy will be the fifth-generation owners, and they were just honored by that proclamation of 150 years, which is absolutely incredible. Chip has been a member of the Talmage Rotary since inception and has served as past president. He always finds times to donate his services to Rotary, whether it's bell ringing, delivering food to the needy, or setting up gift bags, gift bags for kids. He also is the go-to guy for Rotary in opening prayer. We haven't asked you to come in yet, but maybe we might, we might, we might add you to the roster. He's been a past member, has served in leadership roles of the Talmish Chamber. He's also a big supporter of Fire Safety Forces and sits on the firefighter and Safety Forces Committee. He served as the treasurer for the late Gene Stahlmacher, and is supporter of youth, sports, and travel ball when his kids were in Talmage. The Billow Rotary dynasty in Talmage and Akron began with Captain George Billow, which I believe is your great-great-grandfather?
Yes.
Who served in the Civil War and founded the first funeral home. Captain George wasn't a Rotary member because Rotarian clubs didn't exist back then, but Captain George had three sons who came Rotarians, and the lineage from there continued on. Interesting bit of history, Captain George, Chip's great-great-grandfather, worked as a blacksmith and carriage maker on the Sperry family farm. And if the word Sperry reminds you of anything, the Sperry Farm was located on West Avenue in Sperry, where that sits, the West Avenue Taff. That was back in the late 1860s, 1870s. Although Chip does not hail from Talmage, Chip's wife, Patricia, is from Talmage, where once married, they bought a turkey farm off Washburn before settling on Maple Street in Talmage. Chip and the remainder of the Billow family, thank you for your service and dedication to the City of Talmage. I would like you to step up to the podium, if you wish, to say a few words.
Thank you very much. You know, he briefly mentioned my great-great-grandpa and the fact that he was a carriage maker for Oviot and Sperry. That was one of the principal businesses in Talmage in the 1860s and 1870s. And you can put that together and think of the origin of funeral service. Most people that were funeral directors back then were either coffin makers or carriage drivers or carriage manufacturers. That was the history of our business over 150 years ago. It didn't take much talent to back a cart up to a home and then from there to go on to the cemetery. The reality is a fact that he's done that with excellence through multiple generations for over 150 years. I'm really grateful to be, have had the opportunity to meet Patty on the steps at Akron U over 50 years ago, and the fact that we became engaged, married, have raised a family, have had three kids go through the Talmage Public Schools, two of which are valedictorians. They all have post-baccalaureate degrees, they all live right here in Talmage, and I can't think of many people in my generation that can share that kind of lineage and history in a community. But Don, thank you. I'm touched and honored by this very much, and it's a great place to be, a great place to be from, and a great place to come back to.
One of those should be good.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you again, and congratulations. All right. Next up on the agenda is the confirmation of Rachel Osborne as the new Clerk of Counsel. Rachel, if you could come up to the podium? I just want to kick things off by saying, this is a bittersweet moment. Our clerk, Sue Burton, who's proudly served our city for over 30 years, is retiring, and she was, she was a pillar of this process. Rachel survived a very thorough, extremely thorough recruiting process, and I just want to thank Sue and Ally in HR, our working group that we formed, bipartisan working group, to vet out all of our candidates and go through our screening process, and also thank you to council for helping us to evaluate this through our executive session last meeting. So with that said, I just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce Rachel and allow her to address counsel prior to our confirmation.
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to start out and say that I am excited to be here tonight with you all. My current position, I am the Assistant Clerk Treasurer at the Village of Mogadore. I've been there for five years, a little over five years now. For a year, I was the office manager before taking over my current position as Assistant Clerk. I wear many different hats in that position. The duties that I carry out not only fall under counsel and the role of Clerk of Counsel, but under administration, cemetery, and zoning as well.
Any comments by anyone on city council?
We look forward to you starting September 15th, you know, and replacing Sue. Bittersweet, but.
I'm eager to get started.
Yeah, exactly.
With all of you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome to Talmage.
Yeah, and then we'll, we'll need to vote to confirm this new position, Rachel into the new position. So clerk, please call the roll.
No, you need a motion. I'll make a motion to approve Rachel Osborne as our Clerk of Courts.
I'll second it. Okay, we have a motion and a second.
You're going to go ahead.
We have a motion and a second to confirm Rachel Osborne as the new Clerk of Counsel. Any other discussion? All right, now, please call the roll.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Tracy Pletcher.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rabino.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Christine Sippa.
Yes.
All right, Rachel Osborne has been confirmed to the role of Clerk of Counsel by a vote of seven to zero. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
All right, next up item on the agenda, we will go to reports of administrative officers. We'll start this evening with a report from Mayor Kilway.
All right, thank you very much. Just a quick report on updates from our police department. On August 21st, the police, Talmage Police Night Shift A, which concludes Sergeants, Sergeant Fairhurst and Officers Hefner, Godan, Lampley, Wright, and Fersick, safely resolved a volatile, high-risk incident involving an emotionally disturbed person through their calm leadership, smart deployment of resources, and the use of advanced technology, including drones and flock cameras. The suspect was located, disarmed, and taken into custody without injury to police officers, the public, or the individual, and the entire night shift was involved. Their actions reflect a great credit on the Talmage Police Department and the law enforcement profession. Each officer received a letter of commendation from Chief Bohan. I'm also pleased to report that Captain Jeremy McGee has been awarded the Talmage Police Department's Medal of Commendation. The citation, signed by the Police Chief and the Director of Public Safety, recognized his extraordinary leadership, dedication, and professional excellence in safeguarding our community. Captain McGee was specifically commended for his initiative and command of safety operations during Circle Fest both 2024 and 2025. Each of these events drew more than 10,000 attendees, and under his direction, they became the safest Circle Fest on record. His ability to anticipate challenges, coordinate resources, and lead with vision has set the standard for event safety in our city. standard for event safety in our region. Together, these commendations highlight the professionalism, courage, and dedication of our police department at every level, from patrol officers to command staff. Their actions not only kept our community safe in moments of great risk, but also exemplify the values of service and integrity that define Talmage. We are grateful for their commitment, and I know council joins me in extending our appreciation and congratulations to each of these officers. Well done. Thank you. Just some quick updates. We did have a ribbon cutting on August 22nd to celebrate the opening of Butterfly Bargains located at 1389 Britton Road, Unit 43 in Talmage. It's a retail thrift store offering clothing, furniture, home decor, and unique accessories. Also, you are all invited to attend the ribbon cutting for Sheetz Store Number 901 on Thursday, September 4th. Sheetz will be celebrating on this day from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. with the grand opening ceremony beginning at 10:45. Last week, I had the privilege of attending the Talmage Chamber Luncheon, where we were able to hear a presentation from their CEO, Ren Camacho, about the state of the Akron-Canton Airport and the impact that it makes on economic development in our area, including Talmage. It was a great presentation. He is a very powerful speaker as well. I also want to thank the Talmage City Schools Civic Engagement Instructor Cameron Osborne for, again, inviting me to speak to a civic engagement class last week. It's always nice to talk to our students, especially their juniors and seniors, and just getting their perception of, you know, what civic involvement is and how to really plan your life and shape your future by your involvement in your community. So it was a, I did a little bit differently this year. I gave a short, little, you know, talk about how I got to where I'm at today, but then I opened it up to questions, and I'm like, what do you want to hear about? What do you think civic engagement means, and how do we, you know, go about, you know, being good stewards to our community? And so it was really a great conversation that we had. And then I finally just want to address the sign issue that's circulating around on social media real quick and dispel some false narratives that are circulating. All of you on council, along with school administration, were forwarded the email that was addressed to me from First Energy in regards to the signs placed on the utility poles in the city of Talmage and how they're not permitted. I would like to thank Councilman Rubino for reaching out to me to see how we could assist this group in using the signs properly, and I did suggest to him to get permission from property owners along East Avenue and Monroe Road to place the signs properly in their yards. I want to thank you for going out Saturday morning and doing that. That was really nice to see. However, a number of those signs were placed on the utility poles, and they were removed, and they were returned to the schools first thing on Monday morning. I want to make sure that that's very clear. All of the signs were returned. So the suggestion that I am anti-Talmage sports is a very false and inconsistent with my longstanding support of our athletic programs. As a Talmage graduate, the spouse of a former Talmage High School football player, and a youth football coach, and the parents of both Talmage and collegiate student athletes, I have always supported all of our teams, and I will continue to do so. Athletics are a source of pride in Talmage. I, along with the city, will continue to support our teams, athletes, and their families, and we want to thank our residents, our schools, and our coaches, and everyone who helps to celebrate and support our community athletic programs. And that is all that I have, so any questions or comments from council?
I had meant to note this in community input, but just for the record, council was in receipt of multiple written correspondences regarding the school spirit signage. I've made the decision that we'll discuss it more in the rules ordinance, specifically around the concept of the correspondences. And when and when not to read them into the record.
Okay, thank you. It would be nice if you could share them with me. I would appreciate it, too. Thank you.
All right, anything else? All right, thank you for that report. Next up, our Director of Administration, Mr. Ignazito.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Council President Bowles. The only update I have this evening is the budget process is underway. The full timeline and process, just as a reminder, were emailed out to everyone on July 25th. If you have any questions, feel free to give me a call, or we can schedule a time to go over that also. The budget process is definitely a team effort here in Talmage, and I'd like to thank the Finance Director, Molly Gilbright, who is, for her guidance and support, as well as all the members of Team Talmage and all the leadership for their hard work and dedication as we work through this process. It's ongoing, and I look forward to working with everyone as we continue, and it's my second time to go through this process, so I look forward to meeting with council as outlined in the timeline. And pending any questions, that concludes my report this evening.
Thanks very much. Any comments or questions for the Director? All right. Any reports from economic development?
The only report was Sheetz, is the opening of Sheetz, and apologize for the multiple emails, but the Sheetz grand opening and pinning down the actual ribbon cutting has been interesting.
All right.
But we are looking forward to it and very happy to have the business in our community.
Thank you.
I have one question. On the BRE visits, have we visited with Summit Racing?
Prior to my arrival, we have visited with Summit Racing. Recently, we have not.
Mr. Peterson?
Mr. Peterson was part of our strategic planning team and group, so we did have input and did informally talk with him during several strategic planning sessions, and he did participate. Was an active member of the team during that time.
Okay. And is it my understanding that the buildings at the end of Kennedy Drive, which is off of Gilcrest, are they for sale? That's Talmage.
I'm familiar with the area that you're talking about in Talmage. I would have to check to see what is particularly for sale. I know there were some businesses in that area that have been for sale recently, but I'm not sure which ones are in Talmage, if there's one particularly in Talmage.
Okay.
I can check Zoom Prospector as we're going through reports and see if we have something listed there now. I know we're keeping that updated as we become aware of properties in Talmage.
Thank you. All right, thanks very much. Next up, our Director of Public Service, Mr. Rohr.
Good evening. No report.
No presentation?
No presentation.
All right. Any questions or comments? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, our Director of Finance is absent this evening. I don't believe there's any report, and there were no first reading requests. Moving to our Director of Law, Ms. Raver.
Thank you. No report this evening.
All right, any questions or comments? All right. That brings us to our reports of standing committees of council as the whole. We will kick things off with our Planning and Zoning Committee with Councilwoman Pletcher.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. I call to order the Planning and Zoning meeting. There are currently no items on the agenda this evening. Is there any items that anyone would like to discuss? Okay, hearing none, I'll close committee.
All right, thank you very much. That brings us to our Finance Committee with Councilman Pavlik.
Thank you. The Finance Committee deals with budget appropriations, reappropriations, bonds, franchises, investments, and expenditures. Currently, we have one first reading ordinance on, in finance tonight, and it's Ordinance 2025-72, Exhibit A, authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the County of Summit and other political subdivisions for job creation, retention, and tax revenue sharing, and providing for a needed enactment. Sponsor of this ordinance is Mayor Kilway. Mayor Kilway, would you like to add anything to this?
Yeah, thank you. So this is the same memorandum of understanding for job creation, retention, and tax revenue sharing that this council passed last year. However, it did go through some revisions, so you should have the red lines there as to what the revisions are. There was a lot of discussion over the last year on certain items, inflation adjustment amount as well. If anyone has any questions, you know, you can reach out to myself or Finance Director Gilbright on these as well. We're not asking for first reading adoption, but we would like to have this adopted by the October 1st deadline. This is very important for some of the grant funding that we receive, is to have this sharing agreement in place.
Yeah, I think Ms. Gilbright emailed everyone saying that it did not have to be approved tonight.
Right.
So we can move it to second reading.
Right. And as I said, you have the red lines, so you can see the changes that were made, and that was with group discussions and meetings of all the parties involved, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we will move Ordinance 2025-72 into second reading, and that concludes first reading of ordinances and resolutions. Is there anything else that needs to be brought up to finance? Hearing none, I will close committee.
Thanks very much. Moving right along to our Personnel Committee, Councilwoman Sippa.
Thank you. I call personnel to order. Personnel Committee deals with personnel, labor relations, insurance claims, rules of council, and state statutes. We are in the third readings of Ordinance 2024-75, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the International Association of Firefighters, Local 2764, and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor is Mayor Kilway. Mayor Kilway?
I'll defer to our Director of Administration for this comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, Councilwoman Sippa. We are in the final stages of this contract, and we would like to keep it at third reading. It's in the typing phase and redlining, if you will, to go back and forth between the final, the two parties to ensure we have what we've agreed to in writing, and so I would anticipate everything to be wrapped up within the next one or two council sessions.
Good. Okay, we will leave Ordinance 2024-75 in third reading.
Thank you.
Welcome. Next ordinance is Ordinance 2025-69, Exhibit A, and Ordinance 2025-69 amended Exhibit A, Ordinance 2025-69 amended Exhibit A tract, amending Talmage codified ordinances, Section 111.01, Rules of Council, and Providing for Immediate Enactment. The sponsor is council and administration. Would anyone like to speak on that?
Yes, I had one thing. Thank you. Just in the matter of, in regard to the written correspondences from the public, specifically through email or Civic Plus, a good topic of discussion for the rules of council came up just this week on when or when not to read written correspondences into the record, and I think it was applicable to what we're seeing as the new Rule 27 council record. Would we want to add in anything? Would council like to add in any language into the council rules 27 or in another area that may be more applicable to keeping a record of that and maybe calling out when or when not we would read written correspondences into the public meeting? Any suggestions or comments on that?
I think it's a good idea to call that out. I know we had a specific example conveniently come up this week, but I know that there's been other correspondence that have come up in the past where this has been, should it be read, should it not be read, if the person isn't present? So I think it would be beneficial to have some clarifying rules. Yes.
I would agree with that. Because you don't want to run into a situation where you have one-off letters, but then one council meeting, you're going to have 500 letters and would be here only reading letters, right? So...
Yeah, and there is a difference, and thank you to the Law Director for clarifying. There's a difference with matters of planning and zoning at the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings. They do read those letters into the record, but that is not, like we just stated, that is not in council rules. So at times, we've been presented with that example, and it's not a good example in this case, but I'm in favor of putting some language in there around this. For example, if there's a matter of verification of identity through the Civic Plus portal, so not sure how we want to tackle that. Also, like, in certain situations, members of the public request us to read something into the record. Others prefer to remain anonymous if it's like a public complaint or something that they just want us to follow up on. So you want to be respectful of people's privacy. So, but I am in favor of having something, I don't know if Rule 27 made the most sense to me because it's a council record of that occurrence. It may not pertain to an ordinance or resolution, though. It could just be, you know, it could just be like a community issue or something like that as well, so. Any suggestions on creation of that rule or just amending that Rule 27?
Isn't there a rule that talks about public speaking and its two minutes?
Yes.
You could put in there that they have to be present, right? I mean, couldn't you say that?
Yes.
Okay. Just for the motion.
If you'd like, what I could do is look specifically at this issue and try to come back with, I could circle back with the working group to see what you would like to propose and come back to council the following week. I know that you want to get this done, but I don't know that it's, if it waits another two weeks, I don't know that that's detrimental.
Is this a straw poll scenario, or do we need a formal motion?
I don't know that you, I mean, I guess having some sense of what people would like would be helpful, but again, I can, I can look at other samples that are more specifically related to that particular issue and see what other council rules from other communities say and how they address that, and then bring the suggestion back.
That would be best.
Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
And the only other question that I have is, in the amended tracted, the ones that we changed from the last, potentially changing the meetings to Monday, we changed all the other dates where the ordinances and resolutions have to be in. Okay, all right, thank you.
And I am looking at previous agendas. This is the second reading. Okay. And I, like, triple-checked myself to think that I didn't miss a whole meeting, that there...
It's second reading.
It's at second, okay, thank you.
So you can do two different things tonight. You could move to amend the ordinance as presented with the amendments that were presented, and you can clean that up, and then you would only have the remaining issue to, again, look at another amendment, or you can wait and not take any action on this, and I can come back and present that, and you can do that at the next meeting. That's fine, either way.
Is there any difference? Because I know with the codifier, does that affect your...
The codifier, that ship has sailed, so we are waiting for that. We are waiting for that to come back, so this will be incorporated after, like, it'll be, it'll be, this won't matter, no.
I would wait.
Directly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Okay. I'm getting there, sorry. Find where it is. Got too many screens up in here. Thank you.
I had one more thing. On the meetings of council, just on the topic of beginning January 1st, you know, moving date and time. date and time, do you want to, I didn't see, maybe I missed it, I didn't see any language around when we set the schedule, like in the first meeting, like in January, when we vote on the official schedule, do we want to add in anything of like, based on what is confirmed at the first meeting, if it's the organizational meeting or the second meeting, do we want to add any language around?
So the calendar can be voted on, that doesn't have to, that's not an organizational meeting thing. That is just an annual, you guys look at it. Typically, you look at it at the end of the, at the end of the year, toward the end of the year, in the calendar year, before it gets adopted. And that's because the organizational meeting doesn't necessarily occur annually.
Got it. Thanks for the reminder.
Any other comments? Okay, so we are, we will be leaving Ordinance 2025-69 in second reading. Are there any other additional items for Personnel? Hearing none, I close Personnel.
Thanks very much. Next up, we'll move to our Safety Committee with Councilman Rubino.
Thank you. I call Safety Committee to Order. The Safety Committee deals with Disaster Services, Communications, Fire, and Paramedics, Police, and Health. We currently have no open legislation before us. Does anybody have anything for Safety Committee? Hearing none, I close committee.
All right, thanks very much. Next up is our Community Issues Committee. I'll pass the mic to Councilman Roy.
The Community Issues, I'd like to open. Community Issues Committee deals with Parks and Recreation, Civic Affairs, and liaison between Counsel and the Recreation Board, and intergovernmental affairs. We have nothing before us tonight, unless anybody has anything else to add. If not, I'll close committee. Thank you.
All right, thanks very much. Last up is our Public Service Committee. I'll pass the mic to Councilwoman Epstein.
Thank you. I call Public Service Committee to Order. The Public Service Committee deals with streets, highways, sidewalks, buildings, and improvements, water, sewer, electricity, gas, energy resources, recycling, waste, and trash. We have nothing before us this evening. Are there any additional items from Counsel or Administration? Hearing none, I close committee.
All right, thanks very much. Next up is our Reports of Special Committees, Counsel Operations Committee. I have no report this evening. Just going to announcements, I just want to say congratulations sincerely to our clerk, Sue Burton, and thank you for all your years of service. I truly value and appreciate all that you do for Counsel and the Administration and the city, and this is just a bittersweet night, you know, and I'd love to get a celebration on the calendar, similar to what we do at Christmas, and just do a kind of a celebration, you know, grand finale, if you will.
For you and Gina.
Yes, yes, and I want to, yeah, I want to also call that out. We have our other clerk, Gina, that I'm just like, I'd like to organize some, a celebration of some kind. All right, so thank you and Gina for all you do. Any other announcements? All right, last up, we'll go to our Motion for Adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Tracy Pletcher.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rubino.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Christine Sippa.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
It is now 7:54 p.m., and our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.